You guys ready?
Okay.
Okay. Sean, just, okay, we're ready? Want to welcome everyone to the Schuylkill Township Board of Supervisors' October Business Meeting. I want to start tonight's meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we had a number of executive sessions this past month. On September 16th, we discussed, can you hear me, Sean? Okay. We discussed personnel and litigation issues at our workshop meeting, Executive Session. On 9/27, at our open space meeting, we did have a quorum of the Board of Supervisors where we discussed potential land acquisition. On 9/29, it was a personnel issue. On 10/25, it was also a personnel issue. Both of those meetings, I'm sorry. 10/5, I'm sorry, 10/5, where we discussed personnel issues. These were round, round one and two interviews for our new Chief of Police. And tonight, we had, we discussed personnel issues, litigation, and land acquisition. We had a meeting, Executive Session, before our meeting, and we're going to continue it after our meeting as well. Okay, well, that's a lot of executive sessions. All right, moving on, consent agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors' August 19th, 2021 work session, and the September 8th, 2021 Business Meeting. Acceptance of reports, all departmental, committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of September 21, 2021. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
A second then.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's Report and Payment of Bills for the period ending September 30th, 2021. Consideration of Acceptance of the Treasurer's Report and Approval to Pay the Bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
One second then.
Okay, EJ.
Yeah, I'll give a brief Treasurer's Report. Through the end of September, we had a general fund balance of $4,674,018.42. You'll notice on the Treasurer's Report that the ARP funding, the American Rescue Plan funding that we received is now shown separately, so it's not commingled in with the general fund. That amount for the general fund represents an increase of about $85,000 from the previous month, and an increase of about $190,000 from the same point last year. Through the end of September, we've received about 93% of our budgeted revenues, which equates to almost 5.4 million, and we have spent about 61% of our budgeted expenditures, which is about 3.7 million. All of the funds, or all of the other funds are in good shape. The one thing I would mention, just to give a preview of what you're going to see next month, there is going to be a dip in the Capital Roads Reserve Fund as a result of all of our costs incurred in dealing with the damage from Tropical Storm Ida. All the bills are being paid this month, so they'll be reflected on next month. And I'll give a little bit more detail on that a little further down on the agenda. And the bills are all in order, and I would recommend payment.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Two-minute reports from Board Liaisons. Bob, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
Susan, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
Mark, do you have anything?
Nothing exciting, no.
Okay. And I have nothing either. So, EJ, do you have a two, some two-minute reports?
I have just a couple of real quick ones. The ARP funding, the American Rescue Plan funding that we received, originally, our annual report was due at the end of October, but the Fed still had, the Treasury still has not published the final guidelines on the use of the money and the reporting requirements, so they just extended the deadline to April. So, we haven't done anything with that money, and we haven't touched it, we haven't made specific plans for it, because we're waiting to see the final guidelines, and we're still waiting. The only other report I would give is our annual MS4 report for our stormwater was submitted last week to DEP, is due at the end of September every year, and I have that available through Dropbox if anyone wants to look at it. Pretty boring and technical and complicated, but it's there if anyone wants to see it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Four discussion items, old business, update hurricane Ida damage. EJ.
So, yeah, as I alluded to just a minute ago, today, we have incurred almost $200,000 in damage resulting from the storm. The majority of that, as I mentioned, is going to be paid out of the Capital Roads Fund, about $150,000. So, just to give a quick snapshot of what our crews have been working on since September 1st, the priority was, you know, reopening the roads that were closed, repairing any washouts, which we had a lot of along shoulders that were just completely washed out, creating a lot of unsafe situations on our roadway. So, those were the priorities, and we're about 100, almost 100% done repairing and resolving those issues. So, the focus is going to shift now to some asphalt work for some of our roads that incurred more structural damage. There was some water that undermined some roads, and there's some significant buckling, making the roads really unpleasant to drive on. So, the worst cases are on Clolier Springs Road, right at the top, where Aschenfelter meets Clolier Springs. There's also several sections on Jug Hollow Road and a little bit on Diamond Rock Road. So, crews are going to be kind of shifting to begin asphalt work to repair those areas next week. I did want to mention Creek Road. It is still closed, the bridges, the county-owned bridge sustained some damage from the storm. The township, our road crew repaired the areas that were our responsibility, but we can't really touch anything on the bridge since that's county-owned, and we don't really have the expertise to do that. So, we were informed earlier this week that the bridge itself did sustain some structural damage, which we were kind of waiting to hear whether or not that was the case. They had to bring in some divers. We don't know the extent of that yet, so it is still possible that it could reopen soon within, within a few weeks, but it could also be a really long time, and we just haven't been quite given that information yet. So, for now, Creek Road is still closed as a result of the bridge damage. The last thing I would say on the update from the storm, we are still waiting on the FEMA declaration for assistance to municipalities for reimbursement for damages incurred. We are expecting it, but not quite sure why it's taking this long. However, as we mentioned at our workshop meeting, FEMA did approve the disaster declaration for direct assistance to residents and property owners who sustained direct damage to their properties. So, any residents, if you, if you had any private property damage, you can apply directly to FEMA for assistance and reimbursement. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Update, Pole Lemon Drive Stormwater Project. Again, EJ. Sure.
Earl and myself.
We got it.
You have to come up to the...
And please state your name and address.
I'm Earl Kramp, and for those that do not know me, my husband and I lived at the corner of Creek and State Road, and sustained a lot of property damage, along with the road that's adjacent to our property. But I'm here also with our neighbors. There has been some remediation work done on the east side of the bridge that has caused some real concern for ultimately causing more damage in the next big stormwater event. And there's also concern about what's going to be done with the retaining wall, the historic resource retaining wall that is an extension of the bridge abutment and runs all the way to the corner of Creek Road. The wall, most of that wall is now scattered in boulders in our, in our yard, but it is also the wall that's, the asphalt on Creek Road actually sits on top of the footings of this wall. So, eventually, if, if the bridge is to be reopened, and the road is to be obviously reopened, that section on the west side of the bridge is all buckled. It's buckled, and there's, the stone wall's not there, and if it's going to be, if the asphalt's going to be put back on, what's going to be done about the wall? What's going to be done to retain that wall supporting that asphalt?
I don't know that we have an answer to that.
I don't have an answer.
And you haven't heard anything from the county? That's all county-owned.
Well, I did speak to...
The wall might be, the wall might be outside of, I talked to, is Earl, yeah, Earl's here. We talked about it when we were out there. The wall might be outside of where the county's responsibility ends.
Well, I did speak to Mr. Stewart, this county bridge project manager this morning, and as you know, they're, they're still planning to eventually replace the bridge.
Correct.
So, his, his comment to me was that we will replace that, we will fix that wall when that gets done, and who knows, it could be five years from now. It was supposed to happen back in 2019.
Right.
That ship of sale. But in the interim, our concern is what's going to happen when you go to repave that portion of Creek Road if it does get opened? And what's going to happen to that retaining wall? For, it is for the interim. I mean, if it, if it is going to be eventually fixed by the county under, by the bridge project, that's going to be great, but how much longer is that going to take? So, the other issue we have as well is, and I'll probably have Earl address this also, he's got a better handle than I do, but on the west side of the bridge, that, as you probably know, EJ, you probably saw, that entire side of the road just fell off into the creek. And a lot of damage to the bridge right there, to the, to the abutment, property damage to part of Cracks', pasture fence, a lot of property damage on our side too, because it really eroded that bank, and our, our property line does go across the creek. We have a, well, I think we had some real estate there, it's probably washed down in Schuylkill by now. But at any rate, there is, the stones have been piled up, and then that was, that seemed to be okay, that was fine, because now it supports the paving, you know, edge of the road where it's just not falling over. But then, just the other day, concrete was poured on top of the, the stones, which just adds one more layer of impervious surface that we really don't need. And this morning, I was over there, and now there's two inches of dirt on top of the concrete, and it's been seeded.
Did we do the concrete?
And I can barely tell you how long that's going to last until the next tornado. So, you know what, at this point, I think I'm going to ask Earl to come up, and he's got some questions about the engineering studies that may have been done, stormwater management studies that may have been done before that concrete got put on there? No, I didn't think so, because I know there's not been time to do that, it's really been a month since the, since the hurricane. So, Earl, do you want to draw some other questions?
Earl Kramp, 159 East State Road in Schuylkill Township. And I guess my, my question, first question would be if there was any engineering studies that were done, because, you know, it doesn't take a lot to exacerbate flooding by changing the old, changing the bank there, the creek and stuff. And the other thing that I have a question about was, since we significantly altered the floodplain of Creek, I have to ask, was there a DEP permit for working in a wetland?
What do you mean significantly altered floodplain of the creek?
Floodplain of the creek is wet, and, you know, that's established by state law.
Who, who altered it? Who altered it? You said it was significantly altered.
The floodwater altered it, and then we drug it all back up, you know? So, there was significant alteration done, you know, to what was originally done, and as far as I know, there wasn't any, you know, engineering study or hydrology or...
Yeah, Mother Nature doesn't need a permit, it sounds like that's what significantly altered the floodplain.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see. You know, because I, my way of looking at it is if you alter the, you know, the floodplain, you know, you, you need to get a permit to be able to do that. My other question is, did, you know, I don't think there was any engineering studies that were done, but I do have a question whether we got an erosion control plan, or let the county conservation folks know what we were doing? Because there's no way in the world that they would let us put a few inches of dirt and seed it on top of a bunch of concrete, impervious surface, because that's going to slide right off into Barbara's horse pasture and potentially into the creek. There was no, you know, there was no litigation measured, you know, whether it was hexagons or, or, you know, erosion control socks or anything that were put in place there. And that is probably...
Yeah, I don't have an answer.
Okay, I...
Thanks, Earl.
Thank you.
We'll look into it, I guess.
Okay.
Is there any, can you give us any indication of what have we done to remediate this, this concrete now that is just going to funnel more water not only into the creek and, and also into the road? Because the way it's angled is going to create a big pond right there.
I, I don't know.
She needs to come up.
You need to come up to the microphone, because we need to have this on, on film for other people to hear.
Okay, well, my question again is, just putting, putting the rocks there is fine, water can seep down through the rocks. Putting the concrete on top of it is just going to cause a worse runoff situation, further eroding that bank, and that's what Earl was alluding to when he was talking about. Was there a permit done to do that, to not only to pile the rocks up there, but also the concrete over it? And the remediation, certainly, I am not a hydraulic engineer, but it doesn't take engineer science to look at that and say, it's not going to work, and it's not going to last. That two inches of topsoil is going to be gone in the next heavy rainstorm. But continuing that further impervious surface is just going to funnel water right down on that creek bank and just cause more erosion.
Yeah, I think, I think we understand the concern. I'm, I'm going to ask EJ something real quick. This work was not done by the township, right?
No, this was the...
This is the work that was done by the township?
As far as I know, if, it is where I'm talking about. If, if what she's talking about is where I think it is, then yeah.
Okay, then if this was township, what?
It was done during a declaration of a disaster emergency, so we did not lose our road.
Yeah, if you, if you could follow up, just check to see...
Yeah, I think it really does need to be studied. I think that the effects, the cause and effect of that concrete and that stone piled up there is going to create further problems down the road. Not that we already don't have enough. And another question for the Board of Supervisors, and I realize is probably the source of a lot of this flooding is very likely the excessive amount of development that's happening upstream. We're at the end of the stream, basically, here in Schuylkill Township. And I realize that Charleston Township and beyond, where there's been an excessive amount of building down in that Great Valley area. But has there been any regional, or is there any plans for any regional stormwater management plans? Is it too late? Because that building, all this development's already happening. But in 27 years we've been here, we've had heavy rainstorms before, and near-miss hurricanes or tropical storms, and we've never had flooding issues we had this time.
Yeah, so with, with new developments, large developments, they go to the Regional Planning Committee, it's reviewed by, reviewed by the committee, and they all take into consideration, very, very heavily take into consideration stormwater concerns, because we do understand that climate is changing, and it's having a major effect on all the municipalities in the area. So, usually, they try to remediate every single drop of water they would add through impervious surface. I can't say what happened before the Regional Committee was formed, but, but since, since the Regional Planning Committee's been working together, the municipalities in this area have been working to remediate stormwater concerns through new developments and their retention and stormwater retention basins and everything that go, go with those properties. So, that, that is a concern we take into consideration now, but maybe 20 years ago when the development occurred in some of those areas you're talking about along the stream beds, I don't, I don't know 20, 30 years ago that it was a concern, and that's a problem now that we're dealing with everywhere.
But I just want to say though, at the same time, Diane, we don't, we participate, but we do not control other areas, and you should definitely talk to them, and you should go to the Regional Planning Meetings, because again, we have a very limited jurisdiction, we cannot do anything in regard to other jurisdictions.
Right, and I realize that, but the next, that follows up to the next question is, with the FEMA funds that obviously are being received by the township, what, what sources are going, is that going to be used for? Is it going to be used to, to do a study and try to curtail some of the flooding? We have, right where our house sits, we got hit from every direction. We got hit from the Tinkerin Creek, obviously, but not only that, we've been in a lot of runoff in that little Fox Lane Creek that comes down, and that's what, every time we have a heavy rainstorm, you know it closes Route 29.
So, money that comes in from FEMA to the township is used...
Is there any, any plans to study some of that and do some stormwater management?
I think that, I think the money that we receive from FEMA is money that we apply for, that pays for...
It reimburses us.
It reimburses us for damages.
Major roadwork that we've...
It doesn't, it doesn't pay for any studies or anything like that. But there is money that is available to individual homeowners...
Yes.
That... Do we have any information about that here, or is that just on our website?
We have it on the website.
We have it on the website.
The low income or the low interest loans, that, you know, that's not why we're here. We're here for the big picture, you know? We did apply for FEMA.
Okay.
There is any, but big picture is that we have a continuing amount of stormwater...
We have stormwater all over the township, Diane.
Now, I know this was maybe the catastrophic one-year storm, but it's going to be happening every 10 years. So, there, again, there is, and you, I'm sure you know it, the floods come out and blockade the road every time there's a heavy rainstorm. So, is there going to be anything looked at managing that corner right there where the water comes from three different water sources to manage that stormwater a little bit better than it has been? Because this, this was catastrophic event, and like, maybe it'll never happen again, let's hope. But still, every time there's a heavy rainstorm, and it doesn't have to be a hurricane-force rainstorm, we still had that flooding problem with 29, right in front of our house. And now this time, we have it.
And we have flooding all over the township, Diane. You're not, I, I, I'm not trying to belittle what, what's happening to you, because I understand what's happened to you. We had the same flooding in my neighborhood. We had the same flooding up on the mountain.
I, I do understand it was region-wide.
Yeah.
I do understand that, but we still have a continual problem right there at the confluence of three streams that all come together.
Yes, we do.
And it seems to me that that may be a really good place to start, some stormwater management exploration to see what can be done.
Okay.
Some studies. Does anybody else?
Yeah, I have one comment, and it's actually requested EJ and the Board of Supervisors. Okay. This morning, I left Schuster Mansell. She suggested that with the situation with my wall and the, the county having the bridge, township having the road, that it would make sense if the township and the county could cooperate a little bit and help us out there. I have large stones down in my yard, some of them weigh 200 pounds that came from that wall. And if we could, what Jack Stewart, the bridge engineer, Facility Manager for Bridges for Chester County said this morning was, if we can get the rocks up against the road surface, because obviously, you know, you can't open that road with the asphalt dropping off three feet, you know, right where the, the road went, it would be helpful. So, if you guys could work with the county, or if Nick could do it, or somebody could get a backhoe down there and pull those rocks up for us, I would appreciate it. And by the way, EJ, Jack also said that the bridge is sound.
When'd you talk to him?
That the bridge is sound.
Oh, good, all right. Yeah, we heard that on Monday, that, that they weren't sure. Great. I'm glad they're talking to you. Cooperation has to go both ways, and we frequently don't get responses from the county.
We're stuck in the middle.
Yeah.
I, I need some help here.
So, I stopped down and looked at the bridge right after the flood, and it looked like, to the naked eye, it looked good. I couldn't see underneath what happened under the water, but most of the damage seemed to be on the ramps east and west of the bridge.
I'm sorry, Barbara, can you walk me to that space? Barbara Krats, 260 Creek Road. So, I'm here with Earl and Diane, obviously, but I guess just a concern I may have is the erosion that continues on the creek bank, and it's not just by the bridge. I have trees falling down all the time. I moved my fence line in probably at least six feet, and it continues, I mean, we're almost, I have to move it in again. So, it's exponential. It's not just Ida, it's happening with storms, and I've noticed recently too, the water doesn't recede as quickly as it used to. So, I don't know, is there any kind of reimbursement or, you know, something you can do to help us even along the creek? Something that can be looked at?
I don't know offhand. Do you know, do you know offhand, EJ?
I don't, no.
We can, we can investigate it.
I'd appreciate that.
We're talking huge, huge...
I mean, if you walk the fence line, you'll see the fence is just about to fall.
But which, which house are you in?
It's all private property.
Yeah, that, yeah, that would be private property.
Yeah, none of this is township-owned property.
The township doesn't really relate to that.
But I'm not allowed to touch the creek bed. I can't, you know, reinforce that myself. So, at some point, can we set up an appointment, somebody walk the creek, the pasture with me?
I think we have...
Which side of the creek are you on again? Are you on this side or the Route 29 side?
I'm on Creek Road, and my house is on...
What side is that?
The east side. The east side. But my pasture's on the west side.
So, the old flag residence?
Yes, yes.
I actually looked at, so you're talking about if you were coming from 29, cross the bridge, you're on the right, is the right side where your biggest concerns are, or...
My concerns are more on the pavement side. I think it's the road, but my neighbor who lives on the ditch, where the ditches is flooded, right on the creek, they're having issues as well as that creek, you know, the, I don't, do they dredge creeks? I don't know what they do, but it's really expanded, and it's exponential, we have a rainfall, it seems like.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, we don't do creeks. I think that would be DEP you would need to talk to.
Yeah.
I mean, we do roads, the road is us, but that's really it, and we have tons of problems with the road, so I just want to lead you to think we're going to work on the creek, because it's just not our, our burden.
So, who works on the creek?
It sounds like the DEP would be the one restricting you, so I would contact them.
The DEP regulates the creeks, and they would, the state would be the ones who talk about dredgings and things like that in, in creeks.
Did you, Ms. Krats, did you call the office earlier today and talk to Kim?
I didn't.
No, there, okay. Someone, one of your neighbors, I think, was called and talked to Kim about this issue.
Oh, that was yesterday.
Yesterday, oh, yesterday, okay, okay.
Yes, that was me.
We could, we could get a contact for you at DEP and set up a meeting.
Oh, that would be great.
This is, this is like totally out of our, all of our area of expertise in terms of doing work within waterways.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
The township doesn't do that, but we could try to point you in the right direction.
Yeah, yeah, if we start working on creeks, we will make up the township.
This concrete creation, what are we going to follow up with with that?
I need to go, yeah, I haven't seen that. Yeah, I need to go look at it. Yeah, I mean, I, I know the work that was done out there was done, basically, the county told us, this is your responsibility, do whatever you need to do to save your road, so it doesn't just collapse, with the understanding that when the county gets in there to work on the bridge, they're going to be redoing all of that. But we don't know when that's going to be. That could be next year, it could be four years from now.
Good evening, everybody, how are you?
Good.
My name's Warren. My wife and I moved into 220 Creek Road this past spring. We're elated to live here, we love it here. We're, we're Barb's neighbors, and while we're going through, and you guys are looking at this, this process, we live at the bottom of the creek that runs up from Tinker Hill, that little creek that runs and feeds into... And being at the absolute bottom of it, we receive all of the water coming down. We've noticed that at the bottom of our driveway at Creek, it's always wet. The water sits there all the time, there's puddles there now. Imagine in the winter time, this winter, it's just going to be a sheet of glass for cars hitting that bank. And I know that the front of Barb's yard is constantly, has water in it. If, if the section of road from the bridge, about a quarter mile in to Creek towards us right now, if that road could be graded possibly a little bit, because during heavy rains, the steel tube that is at the bottom of that creek that goes underneath Creek Road into the small tree area that goes towards the Y, it just, it's not big enough to accept this water anymore. It pulls up in ponds on my front yard. It pulls up in ponds on my front yard, which I understand, there's, you know, with a lot of us have a lot of things that we're dealing with, but if we can address some of these smaller things, it might help to keep that water moving to prevent it from backing up a little bit. And as you guys are planning this, if this scope of work can be added, or at least considered and looked at as part of the development of that, that area, it'd really be beneficial to us.
Could you explain where, where exactly it is that you live again? I'm trying to picture.
Sure, it's 220 Creek Road.
Yeah.
So we're quite literally.
So if you, if you turn onto Creek Road from 29, you go over the bridge, are you like the first one on the right?
That's me.
That's you, okay.
Second.
Because I know, you're the second one, okay.
Third.
You're the third one, okay. Because I know near where your driveway is, is, yeah, the water ponds there, I saw that when we were out a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, our home sits up off of the road, but the concern again is, is the bottom, we, we couldn't get out of our driveway.
Oh, okay.
Now, granted, this was a hurdle, okay. But in, on heavy, heavy rains, it pulls up at the bottom really bad. And I've gone in there to clean that tube out myself because of all of the creek, just to help that water move along. And right now, most of the time, it's only like six inches deep, so it's not a lot of water. But as you can imagine, coming all the way down creek, it tends to build up pretty good. So again, I just asked it as part of this, you know, if that can be considered as part of this reconstruction, we, we really appreciate it.
Okay.
EJ, is there a way that we can get with the county, have us take a look at that, with the county? Because if we, if we start doing work and then the county comes in and tells us.
Yeah, well, yeah, we've been in touch with them, yeah. You're saying we want to make sure before we do anything that we know the extent of what they're going to do, so we don't do work and then they rip it up.
Yeah.
Three years from now.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. We're, we just recently got like some preliminary plans for how, I mean, when they replace the bridge, they are going to, at least, moving in the eastward direction away from the creek.
Mm-hmm.
They're going to be rebuilding the road a good 50, 75 feet beyond the bridge, if not even more.
Does that affect what he?
It definitely affects you and, and Ms. Kratz. I'm not sure if that goes all the way down to yours, yeah, so.
But we don't know when that is.
No, we're, we're, we've been in touch with the, with the county somewhat, where information is slow, but, um, yeah, we're, we're not going to do anything without some coordination with them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Anyone else?
Yep, I just have one comment. And, and thank you for bearing with us, we're, all of us are a little shell-shocked over the.
I, I understand.
And just, EJ, will you alert us when they're starting to do paving or repair on the east side of the bridge, which is going to affect, directly affect our property?
Yeah.
You know when that may happen?
To the extent that we're, that the township is notified, we would put something out on.
But it's, but township's doing, is, is.
Oh, you're saying the work that we're doing?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you said when the bridge is being worked on.
Oh, no, no, I would hope that they would let us know that too, but.
We hope.
We have a county bridge and a township road.
I know, right?
It's the road paving, and the paving right up to what used to be a stone wall, paving that paving there.
Right, right.
So.
So you, you just, yeah, yeah, we can let you know. I have, well, I obviously have your information and Earl's, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so if I were, once we have an idea of what's going on, let you two know when you can disseminate it to the neighbors?
Yes, I certainly can, I certainly can let them know.
Yeah, we'd really like to know if you have another meeting out there on the bridge to.
Yes, yeah, I, I understand you met with, with the bridge engineers out there.
Correct.
And, and it was probably the, a couple days after the disaster, and we were literally looking out.
Correct.
But if, if, if you would let, since our property is so heavily involved with this.
Sure.
Would you let us know if you have another meeting with them?
Absolutely.
And, and we can hear from all sides if that.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you all, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, do I dare? Anyone else? Thanks, Earl. Okay, um.
The Stormwater Project?
Paul Lemon Drive Stormwater Project, EJ.
I'll keep this really short and sweet, this probably is going to go out to bid next week. We're just finally wrapping up the, the bid specs, and we're hoping to have it on Penn Bid next week.
Awesome.
That's it.
Okay. All right, consider, consideration of ratification of the September 9th, 2021 Declaration of Disaster Extension for Schuylkill Township. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
One second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
One sec, was it, was it on the 9th or was it on the 8th?
This is September 9th.
Would it have been the day of our board meeting?
No, so we, so the fir, so, the night of the September 8th board meeting, you ratified the initial declaration, which then expired on the 9th, so we had to renew it. So this is ratifying that extension.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions by the board? Any questions from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The consideration of approval of the Chester County Vision Partnership Program Grant Contract for the Multimunicipal Clean Energy Transition Plan. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, any comments or questions? Says Township Manager, EJ, do you have any, no?
I mean, do you have any questions?
No.
This is.
Did you want to make any comments about?
This is just a continuation of what's.
Of what we.
You've already been.
We, we approved a contractor last month, and then the county finally finalized the contract that we're going to sign today and send off so that we can get started on the work to do the clean energy transition plan.
Yeah, so none of you can leave without signing.
Yeah.
Okay, did you guys hear that?
You have to sign that.
We have something to sign tonight before we leave, so. Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of approval of the Green Light Go Grant Reimbursement Agreement for the Schuylkill Township Detector Upgrades Project and Authorization for the Township Manager to Execute the Agreement. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? EJ, did you want to make any comments about that?
This is a grant that we applied for in 2018. We were told it was canceled because of COVID, and then we were just notified last month that PennDOT or the state was restoring the funding. So this is for the project at, for the vehicle detection system, Valley Forge Road, the intersection of Valley Forge Road, Country Club and Ferry Lane, and Valley Forge Road and Paulings Road.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
New Business Bid Opening, the 2021 slash 2022 Equipment Rental and Snow Removal Contract.
Got one bid. All right, now I have to, I have to read and write at the same time.
So who is it from?
Madeline is not here.
Who is it from?
This is from Cedar Springs Construction Co., Inc., from, out of Pottstown, Pennsylvania. It was received prior to the deadline, it was sealed and labeled correctly. The total bid amount is, and this is for snow removal and equipment rental, $385,100. And, just taking a quick look through, it looks like everything is here. Any approval will be, the bid bond is provided, 10% as requ, as required. Everything is here. So if the board wishes to approve, it would be a, a conditional approval pending a full compliance review by myself, the township solicitor, and the roadmaster.
EJ, do we have multiple bids last year?
We have not had multiple bids any year since I've been here.
Are we okay with that?
The last time we had a, a, a multiple bid on this, I think it was my first year as a supervisor.
Yeah.
Was that because they all kind of agreed who's going to do bids in what areas?
I can't hear you.
I thought that's because they kind of agreed who's going to do bids in what areas, is that not what's happening?
It's possible.
It's possible.
I think the way we, I think the way we do the bid by combining the equipment rental and the snow removal, there's, there's companies that want to do one or want to do the other, there's not a lot of companies that do both, and I think to, to your point, they may just territorialize themselves. But the bid is PennDOT-approved, the bid, the bid documents and the bid specs, we use liquid fuels funds to pay the cost of it, and it saves the township a tremendous amount of money.
So is it something we should try to improve upon to get more bids, or you feel like we're, we're doing the best we can and that's a good.
I think unless we change the bid itself.
Like split the bid?
Change, yeah, if we split the bid, it'll be a different story.
Okay, but you think we should consider that for next year, or?
Might be, yeah, next year might be a good time to consider that.
I know.
But you feel it's competitive with what it should be?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, I can just take a, let me look again, just to do a quick eyeball test on the hourly rates. Yeah, it looks like most of them are the same or maybe slightly higher in terms of the hourly rates as, as what we're currently paying, so it's, it's in line.
And this dollar amount, I don't think has really gone up since I've been on the board.
Yeah, it was closed last year.
Yeah. Maybe by a thousand dollars or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the majority of the costs for this are paid out of either liquid fuels or, or Capital Highway Fund.
Which are restricted funds anyway, so.
Yeah, well, liquid fuels is restricted.
Yeah, the liquid fuels is.
Capital Highway is a signed fund, yeah.
I know.
That's a good question, whether there's no, you know, no, we don't pay anything, is this?
Correct.
That's right.
Yeah, it's, because, yeah.
Right.
So how the bid, how the bid is structured is, we list all of the equipment that we anticipate needing, and we just provide an estimate of the hours that we think we would need it. They, the, whoever, the contractor provides their hourly rate for each of those pieces of equipment, and then just multiplies it by the time that we provided in the bid specs. So that's what, where the total comes from.
So the majority.
So it's broken down, it's not just a lump sum, you owe us $385,000. It, so it could be significantly less than that if we don't use the contractor as much.
Yeah.
Or it could.
Or it could be more.
Or I was going to say, it could be more if we end up with a storm like we had back in 2014, where we spent the $385,000 by the end of January, and we needed to.
Right.
Figure out what we were going to do in, for the rest of the year.
Correct.
So, okay, consideration of the award of the Schuylkill Township 2021-22, 20, I'm sorry, the Schuylkill Township 2021 dash slash 2022 Equipment Rental and Snow Removal Contract to Cedar Springs Construction for the amount of $385,100, contingent upon the bid compliance review by the Township Manager, Roadmaster, and Solicitor. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second that.
Any more comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Come on up. Now, we all know who you are, but you do need to say your name.
Lori Lutz, former supervisor and observer of things here. I'd like to get a clarification that Cedar Springs is the contractor we have used for many years, and they're satisfied with their work, because I think their rates have been reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I offered a comment, and they were approving it.
Yeah, or, I think the name of the company may have changed over the years, but I think it's the same people.
Weren't they also, was that the company that just worked on Cloather Springs, up at the old spring where we had the washout?
Yes, yes.
Saw the trucks up there.
They've been assisting in, under the equipment, under the existing equipment rental contract for the repairs.
Yeah.
Resulting from the storm, yeah.
They also helped out with some of the construction with Valley Park.
Correct, that was done under a separate quote and approval, but yeah, they, they say, we saved a lot of money by doing, doing it that way.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Any other comments or questions from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of the appointment of Lori A. Getz as the Schuylkill Township Assistant Manager and Assistant Township Secretary, the said appointment to be effective October 25th, 2021. Further, this appointment will replace Mr. Mentery as Assistant Township Secretary. I'll make that motion, I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Woo-hoo.
Thank you.
And hopefully we will meet her at our next board meeting.
Absolutely, we will.
That'll be great. Consideration of the appointment of Mr. Peter Levin, Township Resident, to an unexpired term on the Schuylkill Township Historical Commission, the said term to expire December 31st, 2022. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions, Diane?
We know those.
Oh, you got to come up, you got to come up to the microphone. I didn't hear what she said.
I did.
I'm being sarcastic, we know those terms really never expire. No one needs a mind to expire.
Oh, gosh, that's funny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of action in support of or in opposition to certain applications at the upcoming zoning hearing board.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, do I hear a second? We need to get some discussion from EJ.
I think you need to, I think you need to.
Now we can, we can discuss now.
Yeah, I think you need to amend the motion to specifically cite which application or applications.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I know for sure that the, the application 2021-10, which is the application for 595 Country Club Road.
Yeah.
The board intends to oppose.
Yeah.
There were three other applications up for consideration, I don't think the board was intending to take any action on, but you, you have that.
We just need to amend it to include the first one.
Yeah. Okay, I will amend this motion, so it's the consideration of the board in opposition to the upcoming zoning hearing board application, 2021-10. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? Come on up.
Lori Lutz again, I'm the alternate member of the zoning hearing board, and I had the opportunity to look at this.
Lori, excuse me, hold on now. Are you gonna sit on this? I think it might not be appropriate respectfully for there to be public comment on a matter where there's a case going before the zoning hearing board. So I, I, I'm not saying you're, you're.
Well, let me clarify, this comes before the zoning hearing board at a meeting that I have a conflict with my sewer authority board. So I, as alternate on the zoning hearing board, will not participate in this hearing.
All right, even though you're an alternate, though, I have, I have so concern that, you know, there's supposed to be a total separation between the zoning hearing board and the supervisors, and nobody is permitted to contact zoning hearing board members about a pending application. So I now can, we spent, look, Lori, I've known you for, and I, I, my only suggestion is that maybe it would be better if you didn't make a comment about the application, because that's what you intend to do, because of your status as an alternate member.
Well, I've made my comments on that application to my zoning hearing board colleagues, as the alternate that will not be at the meeting, that's only advisory. And the reason that I am here tonight is to express my appreciation if the board takes action to advise the zoning hearing board.
You're making me nervous, Lori.
So, I admire a lot of that.
Respectfully, I don't think there should be any comment from a member or an alternate member about a ZHP case. The MPC says that nobody can contact them, and they should not contact anybody else. So I, I respect what you want to do, but I, you're making me nervous.
You know what, Lori? How about after the zoning hearing board gives their opinion, you can come in and you can chat to us about it all you want. Is that acceptable? Oh, I'm sorry, is that acceptable, Bill? Okay.
What puts on your agenda tonight is, I think, for this board to recommend the zoning hearing board.
Your supervisors have a right to participate as a party, and that is what they're, they was voted to do. I think they voted, yeah.
We're still in the vote.
We haven't voted yet.
And that's authorized by the MPC. But we have to keep a separation between both, both parties.
And then I will bring in my status as a near neighbor to this particular application.
I don't want to hear it, I, respectfully, I, I can't, no.
I can't tell the board thank you for taking the action.
Well, I can say thank you, but I, it would be inappropriate for an alternate member to talk about the obligation.
Any more public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolutions and ordinances. Consideration of enactment of ordinance number 2021-05, amending Chapter 340 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 340-2, Interference with Snow Removal, Salting, Cindering, or Plowing Operations. I will make that motion, do I hear a second?
A second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of adoption of Resolution Number 2021-14, to adopt the Phoenixville Regional Comprehensive Plan. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any comments or questions from the board? EJ, you have a comment.
I just want to clarify, the resolution you're voting on is to adopt the regional comprehensive plan, both for the region and for Schuylkill Township as the municipal plan.
Correct.
Yes. Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any additional business?
Yes.
Okay. EJ, additional business?
It's not me, actually. It's one of our, it's one of our virtual guests.
Is it Farin?
Oh, that's right, I'm so sorry. Farin, I said hello to you earlier, and I totally forgot about you.
Hold on.
Turned to screen.
Um, can you, stop, oh, I need to stop sharing. Okay. I'm like, how do I, how do I bring him up on the screen? There he is.
Hi, Farin.
Hi, Farin, sorry about that.
Yeah, no worries, thanks for having me.
I think we need to, uh, oh, it's just on the TV.
Yeah.
Farin, can you say something again? We didn't hear you.
Oh, sorry, I, I said, thanks for having me tonight.
Okay, great.
Okay.
That's better, we can hear you now.
Awesome.
Okay. So at our workshop meeting, we were discussing the single-use plastics, and one of the things that we were kind of stuck on was education, because we really want to get the word out, and, you know, before any ordinances are passed, or if the state legislature passes anything, we really want to get the word out and talk to our residents. And we're kind of stuck, because we just don't know what to do. And we were wondering if you had any suggestions for us, or anything that has worked for other municipalities?
Farin, you should, you might want to introduce yourself, though, I know we know who you are, but you might want to introduce yourself.
Sure, yeah. So my name's Farin Savitz, I'm the Conservation Associate with Penn Environment. Penn Environment is a statewide grassroots environmental nonprofit organization. We make sure Pennsylvanians have clean air to breathe, clean water to drink, and a safe and livable environment. I work a lot on our zero waste program, specifically fighting single-use plastic. And one of the things we have been working on across the state with municipalities have been bans on single-use plastic bags from retail locations. And as to the question of education outreach, I think it certainly varies based on municipality, the size and everything. I know Doylestown in Bucks County conducted a survey of their residents, where they just asked if people supported plastic bag ban, if they were already using reusable bags, if they opted for paper or plastic, those sorts of questions. In Pittsburgh, who have been considering a plastic bag ban, we conducted a sign-on letter of businesses and community organizations. So we reached out, obviously they're a very large city, so there are a lot of businesses in their boundaries, but we reached out to businesses across the city and in the area, their community and neighborhood groups, and asked if they supported a plastic bag ban in Pittsburgh. And we released the results of that letter last week at a press conference, we had over a hundred signers on it, and that's one way of going about it, approaching businesses or groups in the area. I know some communities have their EAC, reach out to the community and gauge opinions and what people think about it. It's definitely important to engage people before moving ahead with an ordinance. Does that answer the question?
I just have a quick follow-up. You mentioned Doylestown, was that Doylestown Borough or Township? Do you know?
Um, I believe it was the, I always get confused which one's the bigger one.
The Township is, is much bigger.
Yeah, it's, it was the Township.
Okay. I know the manager there, so I can try to get a copy of that survey, if that would help, yeah.
So, Farin, we wanted to start seeing if there's anything we could do to educate our residents about the benefits to it, and we actually have a really nice Girl Scout group that's interested in working on maybe some education. Have you heard of any things that they could, maybe we could work with them, with the Girl Scouts on doing to, just kind of, we, we don't want to just roll out an ordinance, we'd like to start
Right.
kind of explaining to people what the benefits are, why we might be working on that. Have you seen anything work for other places that we could kind of start, so we're not just springing on people?
Yeah, so Philadelphia and Westchester, I think, are good examples of this. They've both passed plastic bag bans. Philadelphia's went into effect last Friday, and they both put out on their website resources that residents can access. That gives them information about what's included in the ordinance, why it's important. I believe Philadelphia has some numbers around trash and the cost of residents in the area, and who is covered by the ordinance, what types of bags are allowed, what aren't, that sort of thing. And I think that that'd be fairly easy to put together, just some talking points about what you plan to include, and also facts about pollution. And I, I'd certainly, Penn Environment would be interested in helping you put that together if you want some of the facts. I know we shared some information that we've compiled, including information on like, how much PennDOT spends on litter cleanup, some of the data on how plastic bags flog recycling infrastructure or block stormwater management, and other, other such data, but we could certainly help you pull together some resources. We've also done a study on microplastic pollution in waterways across the state, which microplastics are what happens to plastic in the environment instead of biodegrading. Plastic just turns into these tinier and tinier pieces of plastic, which are in the air, they're in our food, they're in our bodies, and we found them in every waterway we tested for it, including the Schuylkill River, Valley Creek at Valley Forge. And so that's certainly compelling data to share about just the breadth of the problem, because plastic pollution is certainly an issue for every single municipality across the state.
Farin, do you ever do presentations, like, could we maybe have like a workshop, or we have the
The Country Club.
Country Club?
Yeah.
Does your group ever do kind of workshops where we could do like a little presentation to people about, you know, the things you're talking about?
Yeah, we, we certainly present about the waste crisis, plastic pollution as an issue. I believe I presented to the Schuylkill EAC a few months ago
Mm-hmm.
at one of their public meetings. But we'd be happy to talk about the issue, why plastic bag bans are important, why they're effective, we're part of a national organization, so we've seen what works and what doesn't work in these ordinances all across the country. And so we know what to include in ordinance, some facts and figures from places where they've done things that haven't worked, things that have worked, we know the lay of the land and the state, so we'd be happy to do that.
Great, great. Well, those are great ideas.
Yeah, I think so, too. I think it's a, it's a good place for us to start, so.
We'll get in contact with you then, I guess, about that, and see if we can put something on the calendar.
Yeah, awesome.
So, Farin, are you, are you local to us here? Like, you said that you work throughout the state, and so if we were to have something at our country club, are you local, or would someone else that, that's from your organization come and do that for us?
I'm based in Philadelphia, so I'm not
Oh, okay.
And currently, we're not doing a lot of in-person events, hence why
We aren't either, so.
But as, as things improve in the general state of the world, I'd certainly be able to come out to something, or one of my colleagues would be able to. We're always happy to do virtual presentations as well.
I imagine at this rate, we're looking at like, next year at the earliest for something in person for you, so.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think so, too. So, okay, great, Farin, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I, if I can add one more point.
Sure.
One of the big developments in the state is that the preemption on local plastic ordinances is lifted. So, to give a bit of backstory, back in 2019, the state legislature, as part of the budget, passed a ban on local plastic bans. And then they extended it back in 2020 as part of the budget again, and it's going to expire in December. We know that they're going to probably attempt to pass another preemption or pass it as a standalone bill, but the more municipalities that take action on this issue, the harder it is for them to take this power away from municipalities. So there's certainly a bit of urgency about passing plastic bag bans. So it's just great that you guys are discussing this issue, and I'm happy to help along the way.
Okay, great. Does any member of the public have any questions for Farin? Okay. Thank you, Farin.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Okay. Do we have any other additional business? No? Okay. I only have one announcement to make. This October, the Schuylkill Township Police Association will once again be holding their annual food drive. However, due to the continuing health pandemic, we will be changing things up a bit again this year. Instead of having donations dropped off inside the Schuylkill Township Municipal Building, we'll replace a donation bid, bin outside the entrance to the building. The donation bin will be taken in each night. Let me see what else I have here. The donation bin will be in front of the Schuylkill Township Building for the entire month of October. We will also be happy to arrange to have donations picked up from outside of your residence, and arrangements can be made via email or a phone call to the police station. We're also going to have another food, another drive-by drop-off day this year. You can drive by the upper parking lot of the Schuylkill Township Municipal Building and have a police officer or a police athletic lead volunteer take custody of your generous donations. The drive-by donation day will be held on Saturday, October 16th, 2022, and it will take place from 9:00 AM until noon. They also have a donation box at the vestibule at Forests Country Meat Market. We would greatly appreciate the use of their vestibule each year. As you know, food insecurity is a sad reality for many in our community. This year, the need for food and related items is urgent. As police officers, we see this need all too often. We realize that times are tough all around, but we also realize the extraordinary generosity of our community and the strong desire to help others in need. If you are able, even one can baby item or non-perishable good will make a huge difference to someone. No donation is too small. Please allow us to express our sincere gratitude for your help in the past and for any help you can provide us this year. On behalf of the Police Association, kind regards from Officer Jim Hennessy. So, that's the only announcement that I have. Does anyone have anything else?
Okay, I just, I just wanted to let you know that the Township Newsletter arrived at my house today, and it's lovely. But the front page announcement about Founder's Day and honoring Dr. Schreiber at Valley Vet is going nowhere at this point. A letter to Dr. Schreiber and repeated phone calls to him over and over again have gotten us no response whatsoever. So at the September meeting of the Historical Commission, we had to make a decision whether or not to hold on to that space reservation we had at the Country Club, and I still have not heard back from Dr. Schreiber. So we canceled the November, it's November 6th
Okay.
at the Country Club. I'm, I don't know if he is even aware of our plans. I tried to call him, I've left messages, I've
That's a shame. That's really a shame.
It's a shame, it really is a shame. But the Historical Commission, we all decided that since we can't get ahold of them, and obviously we can't hold the program without them, that once, we will, I will continue trying to reach out to them, and maybe plan it at his convenience, maybe at Valley Vet, it's, you know, right at his business itself, rather than trying to drag him away from his busy schedule to the Country Club. I just don't know what's happening with it, but it's a shame, because it's the front page news of the newsletter, it's now not happening.
Well, I guess, should we put something up on the website, EJ? Saying that it's canceled until further notice?
I did talk to Madeline, Madeline's aware that, I asked her to cancel it with the Country Club.
Okay.
They're not holding the date open where they could have an event.
Okay.
And Madeline said she would, I will remind her, too, when she says
Oh, it's a shame.
Yeah, the newsletter had already been finalized
Yeah.
back in August.
So maybe Dr. Schreiber will see the front page of them. I've got to get the word to him somehow.
Oh.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's very supportive of that.
Thank you, Diane, I'm so sorry to hear that. Okay. Any other, does anyone have any announcements? Is there anything from the fire company going on? Oh! The lasagna sale, is, has that been cut off?
It's just Saturday.
Saturday, right, October 9th?
To order. To order?
Yep.
Okay. So this Saturday, the Valley Volunteer, Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company is having a lasagna sale. I had it last year, it's delicious, so I suggest that you do it, it's homemade, and you don't have to cook. And it, the pickup is from 9:00 to noon, is that what it is on Saturday?
It's on the website.
Okay, great, thank you, Rick. Go ahead, come on up.
Actually, good evening, John Mraz, Schuylkill Township. Two other announcements, there's two shredding events coming up this week. One Saturday at the Votex School, and I think Tuesday on Star Street. So, for people who are wanting to shred, there are two free events.
Oh, okay, where is the one this Saturday?
That's at the Votex School, 1:00 to 4:00, and then the one on Tuesday is 8:00 to 12:00 at Phoenixville on Star Street, down at Church and Star.
Okay, all right, thank you, John. Wasn't not aware of those. Awesome. Okay, any public comment?
I'll make it quick. I'm David C. Patterson, I live at 280 Creek Road. I know we talked a lot about Creek Road today. My only comment, it's not so much a question, more just a comment, we're obviously concerned, right? And we don't have resources in the sense of, we're not worried about the financial side of it so much as understanding the process. So we're looking to you for help. So if it's coming across as frustrating or anything like that, we're just looking for resources to understand how we can create either a better stream, a little bit more continuity of operations on the road, and how we can facilitate that through being resident. I'm not a board member, not voting on anything, so that's my only comment for the season. But thank you.
Yeah, we understand, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? I'll make a motion to adjourn, do I hear a second? I'll make a motion to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.